There you go.
Are the mics on yet?
No, not yet. You got two minutes.
Kyle, is this your first meeting?
It is.
Before, when you want to wait for it to get started. Because the only thing I want to ask you to do is that personation of Kimmy Hill. I mean, you nailed it today. Yeah, we were laughing. Don and I were in tears. I'm like, you've only been here for a couple of days and you already got Kimmy Hill down pat. You know what I mean? If Carson was still on television, like, he's never done that before.
Okay, now I'm going to try.
I'm glad we just turned around and moved safe and well. And we're repelling a witch's sinners, one nation, let her out. We have a rule with liberty and justice for all. My rights are certified. We just want to thank you for being able to believe in your presence as a passionate people special. We just ask that we can speak for our people just um, out of west of California, just along the desert, the fire, and also kind of the world. The message is a man who will protect them. We just ask for that. And please someone else who may have been a church in Canada, trying to turn those houses over. It's not a bad thing to ask for that. And that he feels so that we can help him to take care of our children, push on the city of America, and love them. And I suppose that's how we appreciate it. You know, we've got a portion of the board, we've got a speaker on that, it's on the line. Next up, several services that has been a long time in town. We do, it's been about thirty years since we had a meeting this last time. That's a lot. But we're still having a good time.
I don't know where we live either, so we just kind of wanted to make your lesson. I am Stacy Ware. I am the director of Transformation Force of Home Services in Morgan County next. We kind of just wanted to leave your lesson on us going forward with the Great Central Coast of January 1st. Honestly, I've been telling that for a long time. And as a vital service to Morgan County, I'm sure you all know. I put some numbers on there and want to think for us to go back to remember fiscal year twenty five members. But I should have seen, we served five hundred and sixty individuals who did eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five trips last year in the fourth. So, it's a vital service and we want to continue however we need to.
I think that's awesome.
Yeah. Absolutely. And then watching our last year's move to the right, the one I'm actually getting to the right, three hundred and fifty, we like, would just be part of it.
It was nice to meet you Stacy. I used to be before, twelve years ago. And I was very, very, you know, you're off, but I'm always looking to say that. I'm concerned it's more years ago, it's still this. We lost county workers. And you know, site of significance that makes our district are in, not too far from the county, county line. So if they're going, it makes it really inconvenient, I suppose, the services with them, because they want to know where this far as general is north of you. In fact, I was hoping to think there. I don't know what your lobbyists or whoever does this want for second law. I think it's something to be beneficial to, to work on. I think we got that knowledge to make the trips based upon the location to where they go, no matter where the county worker is. And they would serve that type of thing. And here's another thing, like, before they did an eighteen thousand, eighteen, eighteen thousand trip, almost nineteen thousand trips. You have to break that down on my township or my town.
Absolutely. We can do that by township, zip code.
I'd like to see those sometimes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, you know, for me, you record them and just get them.
Well, I was planning to come back and give you all just kind of bring them up to keep on a lot of things. So I will include that and we'll carry that back to you. And I would also like to share that we have been giving the bill ahead, so I should know much about coming from town back a minute ago. We can now possibly do this in town from Morgan County and we can plan tomorrow. So.
Is that more than a year?
Yes, that's reasonable. And literally, there are a lot of folks that want to go from here to visitors' county. Unfortunately, the folks that we can't, like, we get are still working out the logistics of this going, Morgan County, unless they need to, or, you know, other camps.
This is a, is a character, is that?
Well, it's because we operate in both, as to what kind of ones we speak to, it's kind of in the way of the town.
Yeah, we'll see more.
Yeah, so because we operate in both, we can cover. There are talks about whether to marry, kind of, or not to marry. It's just working out the logistics, we would have to identify, chain the agency there, that way we would have offer the trip to them. And then when they come to one of our companies and the guys, so, so, we're working out the logistics that's going to come with the trial program to that. So, I hear you.
I have to come there, I hope to see if, I have to see more services. I can't have enough, I also agree, everyone's attention, but, Monmouth, I don't believe, Senator Blackwell, one. Can personally interfere with future projects and early, and a service is provided nineteen thousand troops, people need transportation. That Senator Blackwell could generate us.
I have a motion for a special, I have a question for the board, not for the others. Not here, we're all in Ferguson, not so high, not high, motion for this.
It was nice to meet you all.
We want to see you.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't tell you how facilitating it.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Mark Ross, you know, I head up our Transformation Division, who is Brad Skelley. He is our, he's like our expansion team, basically the south part of Minneapolis. We just wanted to come in today, just to give you guys kind of a little bit of a day of work, right, and projects we're working on. I'm specifically going to talk about the Lethal Road Project, Brad will be talking about the Road Project, just grab that. Just a little background on that Lethal Road Project. We have, they're down at the scope of that project, so two, two sections that we're going to do the curb corrections on. One is about three tenths of a mile of the way to the lane. And the other one is by a flatiron drive, two curb corrections there. So those two areas, about five, six, we got a little bit of construction through there, kind of push the curb away from, there's a decent sized roadway on the inside of one of those places. And what we're going to do is push the road further to the east, that's what I said, the road is on the west side. We're going to push the road to the east and then put, put the guardrail inside that curb. They're just, you know, away from that curb, there's just not enough room to pull off the guardrail and start now, put the guardrail in. Some substantial, or a decent, I don't know, or something like that, so we can say, you know, push away from these, these guardrails. We're at the actual design process for the road. We had a field check earlier, it was at the end of October. And then what we're at now is, we've got all the byway designed out. We've got the title in order, the order that we're going to be providing engineering for them. That we're going to be, that's how we're going to be able to send out a basic document to go forward for the byway. The North Guard, the Foxman, and there are three modules that we're going to be building from. I'm sorry, that's a setup, the road looks black boxes. Our estimated construction cost at this point in time, is about eighty thousand dollars. And the North Earth is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What we're anticipating is that we let the project, it's one project, we're not contracted. But we not allow, you don't have to be a co-keeper, just because of how many times I wrote it, so, but we, and, uh, only allowing contractors to run those curbs at that time. They have to go to the byway. So, we're hoping, obviously all depends on how I go purchasing items, as far as timing is concerned. But we're hoping that we can let the project sometime next year. I hope, hopefully, we'll get one of the curves, can sharpen it, call, load, I can help with that. I hope we'll get one of the curves constructed and fall low, I hope at this point. There's also some utility formation, you can be known to always be utilizing the food. This is for maybe getting out and maybe just relocating outside of the city. That's kind of where we're at on the local road project. I don't know if you want to rank it over there, or if you want to ask any questions about this.
I'm just going to stand there, because I'm sure you refer to the two nerves as the adjacent to relatives, who call us howers. Because if you call them, that's all you're going to do, somebody hower. If they're, if they're. Totally agree, yes. It's, it's unlikely. But there's a few places with the mentality of that, and some are really watching it in the mountains of Tennessee. Yeah, we're trying to find that one cabin, looking at the good deal, and we can do two. We can still do four. There's tails out there. They're off. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so I just wanted to provide you with that tail, and that is a great project. We did the curb correction there. The site was, that's the caller, I'm going to use your group. It's a new little plate structure that I believe the family first year, it was actually, that's kind of how I saw it. Then utilizing the project. We are, I was hoping to come even with a change of contract, and I can bring that back to you. It's vacation on contract, we said, but we're going to both project now, we're paying a hundred thousand dollars. The early package amount of us, and so we're going to should credit on that. And this project was, the savings, majority of the savings came from. The R O L, it was a significant amount of fill, it was a industry that we needed in the property. But it's just, so our additional cloud screen, our material, the design engineer, I would be patient. So we saved about 65,000 dollars in the R O L. And then there's some ditch work that was left and basically visiting issues, determined everything. There was six significant savings there. The project was late in March. Over the last, I'm contracted to other moving to office. In July, because you're probably aware, and then open in October. All the residents are really, we're very, very careful, as we're on the street, so we're contracted. Before we end with them, we're contracted with the, in that house, overall, our product. So when we come back to you in a couple weeks, or I think a couple weeks, just close out documents that you got stressed, go ahead and close them out. We've got standard grass there, so we're, we're all clean and issue.
And you heard, how it keeps, the property, just north of that, would be just to the east, or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was made aware of that. I'm going to start to start with, and my understanding of what they can add.
I don't know, so much for, if you kind of had someone else to do that.
You know, we were brought in a little after the utility formation stuff had started. I believe that Moss and Biff formed a clearing thing, so it was a real case. One, walk on, have water, some locations, they're going to do, they continue some renovations. The current, so they did a lot of, so I'm not sure if the county gave them that, or if Moss and Biff, that's why I said that was. It was a little bit of front and forward. But I know that he was upset with, there was some confusion around there.
Yeah, you guys, you did, you got a lot of fifteen, the first level, and it's interesting. Cause he's already got fifteen, and they all had, pretty much, to find out, and then, by, so. I'm going to try to look with him, we've got a little mask on, trying to get him to say, cause he's sort of, he was, he was. Getting fifteen foot, we're in the trees already, and we run out of, and we're in the state, that can even fire. And then they're going to take out, so now, but just by the center. And so that's, that's one, and then, you would share your contact with Moss and.
Yeah, yeah, I can, do you reach out to Moss and, that's awesome.
I can help call him, so maybe you can come back there, that's two weeks.
Oh, you know, it's all, it's all good, that's.
We know, so we are tasked with the, so, we're not having to. I like, I love the imagery of this.
I think it turned out a little bit. Yep. I'm taking it around.
Appreciate it. I'll sleep to here.
I'm going to go, so.
I have a brand new, let, pay that code that we're, uh, keeping the rule for. Oh, it's on our IPOS, we're shouting, informed that the D C is using a new code. IPOS is our integrated public learning system. This is how we're able to send G O L messages out to the county for this, for some plans. Many of those are codes are controlled by state, such as, you know, our rule, or, or, and so on. This net code will be a link to a code that allows us to send our own notification for a same client in third person. So we've now a couple of policies to ensure that this is something that we'd like to implement into our county. As a parent of society, that you guys know this is something that we'd like to see implemented. So I'm seeking approval for the animation managers program, which we have before I do. We have right now the procedure, or what that will look like, as well as the matrix or what constitutes in the same thing to a person from Morgan County. And who would want that for that. The way that IPOS is written, that code is, is anyone that does not need, or that does not yet need, that ever, or, 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 so on. So this can be sent out instead of, or while waiting for approval, for those other codes that we sent out at this stage. Also, for approval, would be, in the course of having SOP for E M A and dispatch. So with that, to have more people that are able to send out those IPOS messages, dispatch is very, then we would be hopeful if there are people in dispatch that can also send those messages. So this would be an ethical SOP for both E M A and dispatch, just with their respective SOP numbers. With that, I have the, oh, it's indeed, dispatch director, I mean, Derek, that's a sending out.
This is, you said we had to have this. Now, dispatch is approved, this is the whole thing.
Dispatch after.
Has it been done?
Then have, so there is SOP number with the session three, three, three.
It sounds like we want to. Yeah. So, and that's two things in the back end, which, of course, must be, must be, yeah, must be, must be.
I'm watching the question, I'm, the message, and you're supposed to learn from, you know, then, you know, second.
Second.
So, I'm asking, okay, I'm going to talk to you in a moment. We're going to, I'm 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 going to.
Welcome, we're going to, we're, 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 we're.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
There is some contact in the, we, we need some assistance, um, in terms of the transition. And from our previous, to our previous server, to our first, this is why. Not that it's not, I'm waiting for, I think you're down, I'm, we've had quite a long conversation today, but do you think that's a benefit to do some analysis? I really would like us to wrap it in, because by the, most, for the necessity to, basically, try to, we, uh, we're responsible, Mr. and Mrs. Powers, to, to, uh.